We're going to call the meeting to order. Public notice, Board of Commissioners, Home and Terrible Housing Authority, regular board meeting of the Board of Commissioners, Wednesday, September 24th, 2025, 3:00 p.m., 124K, Senator Circle, Houma, Louisiana. Mr. Sherman, can we get a prayer from you?
Yes.
Stay right where you are. Do not stand.
It's the Our Father, prayer, a sample prayer that was initiated by Jesus Christ and found in the Word of God at St. Matthew's, Chapter 6. It says, "Let us follow us. Let us pray together to Our Father. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, in earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our debts, as we forgive our debtors, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever." Amen. The pledge of allegiance to our flag of the United States of America? Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
You're welcome.
Roll call.
Commissioner Burke, Commissioner Boykin.
Here.
Commissioner Sherman.
Here.
Vice Chair Piku.
Here.
Chairperson Ebert.
Here.
We have a call.
Order of the day, approval of agenda.
The agenda will proceed as published.
Public comment? We don't have any more. Election of officers, October 1st, 2025 to September 30th, 2026. Nomination of chairperson.
Nominate Chairperson Cheryl. And Vice Chairperson.
No, just one at a time.
One at a time.
Okay, I need a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion counts. Now I need a nomination of Vice Chairperson.
Nominate Chairperson, Vice Chair, Danny Piku.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion counts. Approval of minutes, July 24th, 2025, regular board meeting. I need a motion.
Second.
We're not saying names, are we? I just realized that. Motion by Mr. Burke, second by Mr. Piku, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion counts. Bills and communications, approval of pay vouchers for period July 11th, 2025 to September 12th, 2025. I need a motion.
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Piku.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sherman, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion counts. Monthly financial reports, June 2025, memo from FEMA to Board of Commissioners, balance sheet for June 2025, income and expense statements for June 2025, public housing financial assessment score for the month of June 2025, bank reconciliation. Monthly financial reports, July 2025, memo from FEMA to Board of Commissioners, balance sheet for July 2025, income and expense statements for July 2025, public housing financial assessment score for the month of July 2025, bank reconciliation. Reporter Secretary, Executive Director, Agency Update.
My Agency Update is in the packet, but it's a few things we need to elaborate on. One of the items, well, two of the items that's on the agenda, the operating budget, it was delivered to you all late because what I just was explaining, but I want to do it on the record. A few months back, HUD reached out stating that our operating money was going to go down for the fiscal year 2026 because BIA Towers was approved for demolition, the Section 18 application. So what the FEMA was doing, we were trying to see if that allocation was going to come out because HUD fiscal year started with ours, 10-1. It didn't, so that's why y'all got them so late. So what they did was, we have three amps. Amp one is Senator Circle, amp two is BIA Towers, amp three is the scatter sites. So what they did across the board, they did, I think, I don't exactly how much it was. They went down on operating for all three because we don't know exactly, but she didn't put the amount in that we're usually get. She did decrease it at all three amps, just so we could have a budget in place because we're not going to get the monies that we got for BIA Towers the previous years because of the approval of the Section 18 application. So just wanted to clear that up before we get to those items on the agenda. Also, we have NARO in Arizona that's coming up this weekend. That's where I'll be traveling, Tampa as well. LHC is the first week in October, is in Lafayette. They don't have a deadline for cutoffs, so if any of y'all wanted to go, you can reach out to Nacquada, we can set that up for you, get your room. So if y'all want to drive back and forth, I wouldn't advise it because it's two hours of drive. That's fine as well. Also, we'd do some, getting the gate put up there. After speaking with the mayor and several of the residents in the area, they were calling the police because they had people that were staying in the units. And so what we're going to do is put a chain fence up with bar wire on top where we'll have access when we go there to check on the property. And I'll just have a key at the mayor's office there. On last week, I'm sorry, Tuesday, we did issue the last two residents that were here eviction notices. Just want to put the board, you know, so y'all can know as well what's going on. That's the two last residents that we had in Senator Circle. They did get eviction notice, got a 30-day notice. I think the deadline is October 16th. Over the last month and a half, we did visit a few properties, lane and apartment complexes. I can't remember the name of the apartment complex behind the mall. We visited that one. It's Mr. Lina came maybe at the July meeting. We did meet with him to see his units. We met with Mr. Cullen from South Central Planning with the lane on side of Chevron that I think like a year or two, about over two years ago, we were trying to get back there because that's moving north, if we could get some of the land that's not in the flood zone. We, Jamie, myself, Nacquada, and Drew had a meeting with them. And then we also seen some lane off of MLK as well. Jamie is checking to see environmental for those three properties because it's federal money. We just can't say, hey, we're going to spend federal money if everything is not in place. So that's where we at with those right now. As I get more information, as Jamie give it to me, I'll keep the board, you know, abreast with it. On a call that I had with HUD, maybe the end of last month, we were discussing BIA Towers and Senator Circle, but BIA Towers, I don't know if you all recall, we had 265 tenant protection vouchers for BIA Towers, meaning that they're protected. So we have to bring those back, public housing. The other 35, because it's 300 units, 35 of those units, we could go to RAG. That's the Rental Assistance Demonstration. I think I mentioned it to you all before, and I told HUD I would bring it to the board to see if that's something that you all will be interested in. Because once we finish everything with the demolition and everything, get the money from FEMA for BIA Towers, we could do a small neighborhood with 35 units. And that could be mixed housing, mixed findings. But the other 265 has to be public housing because that's the tenant protection vouchers that one of them that Mr. Don has. So when we applied, the reason we got 265, that's what we had in house. That's the units that was occupied. 35 was vacant. So those 35, if the board say, hey, we could entertain it, I can reach out to, I forgot his name that was on the call, he's one of the HUD offices. He told me that I can start the application for those 35 if y'all would want to entertain the Rental Assistance Demonstration, RAG.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I know what RAG is, Rental Assistance.
Okay.
And I know how like BIA Towers worked. You know, my eyes is kind of Rental Assistance too. So what, other than the mixed, is that the only thing different? Is the mixed population?
Basically, it wouldn't be public housing.
Oh, it would not be?
No. It's still going to be under Houma Terrible, but it won't be public housing. And this weekend, they have a few sessions on that because of RAG. I never, I know from what Brandon and I had to discuss with HUD, but I want to sit there this weekend, actually learn the ins and outs because we always.
It's new to us.
Yeah. We always is public housing.
So it's not public housing, it's just called labeled Rental Assistance. But this isn't like ownership, is it?
Which homeowner is it?
Homeowner.
For the rest?
No. Okay. That's all I want to know.
To give you two seconds on it, if you don't mind, is under your traditional public housing, sort of like what she was just explaining with the budget and how they're going to be adjusting what the agency receives for BIA Towers because it's not listed in pick as housing residents any longer. So HUD came up with a different product or a different program altogether to address housing needs across the country. And sending money to local agencies to build and maintain brick and mortar was no longer efficient or effective. So what they did is they figured out the calculation on rent in your area, sort of like a Section 8 voucher, which says, I'm giving you rent based on your income and against what your housing needs are. And you may end up with a voucher for $1,200. That $1,200 voucher contemplates paying a landlord rent. A landlord would build into his rent annual maintenance, insurance, property taxes, and so forth, which is why it costs somebody $1,200 in the private market, unlike what we have. So RAG is essentially taking what we would ordinarily do in public housing, putting a private dollar figure amount to it, and telling the tenants and the agency, if you convert to Rental Assistance Demonstration project, a facility that you have will be paid according to RAG rents. RAG rents is pretty much equal with Section 8 rents. So it then becomes the owner's responsibility of that property to maintain insurance, property tax, as well as capital improvements. You will not get any more money. So how we get cap fund, you don't get that anymore, the $1,200 rent payment from each tenant.
So the people that live in RAG housing pay their own insurance?
No, 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 no. The amount that they're paying for rent.
Oh, covers all that.
Covers a fractional share that the onus is then now on the owner to manage. So when you get a $1,200 payment in, you got to notice that aside, 5% for this, 15% for that. And then you get down to what your real profit is, which is like $300 per unit.
Okay. So the next question I have is if we would entertain that and we would find land, would they have to be separated?
What you mean? You asking if we rebuild BIA Towers, do the 35 rent? I don't see a problem.
Would they have to be?
Would we have to do it separately or could be different parts of land in the same area?
You can go wherever you want.
Okay.
So the main concept is this, is that the agency itself will likely enter into a partnership agreement with another entity to actually fund the construction as well as potentially be an owner with us through the payback of the construction cost. So if it costs you $5 million to build 25 units or 30 units, that person may show up and fund everything, and they will be a partner with us until that is repaid. Right? And then the repayment of that loan comes from the RAG rents. So when we put the tenants there, the tenants are receiving rent based, like they would ordinarily receive in public housing. Except now they're receiving the full dollar amount. Those rents are then paid to the owner, who then pays off his loan and so forth. So the structure is a lot different.
Yeah.
We won't, right, we won't actually manage the tenants as much as we will manage the asset. The management of the tenants actually is going to fall back to the voucher entity in the parish. So right now, you have two voucher issuing entities in Terrible. You have TPCG, and you have LHC, which is Louisiana Housing Corporation. So each of those entities can issue vouchers here. One of them would be responsible for managing the RAG rent voucher tenant in your unit, meaning that if they have a problem with rental coming in or whatever it may be, they will handle them on that side, and we will handle just the property side.
How do you feel about that?
The RAG is the one that I bring it to the board because when I had the HUD call, we discussed it, and I didn't want to keep that information from you. But I feel like if we get in acres, if we do move ahead, you know, along and get acres, we could build back our 300 if it's in our budget. Or if you all say, hey, let's just do the application, see how it works out, what?
Could you get back to us on it after you, you said you wanted to kind of investigate? Just to see your feelings on it, the ups and downs, or haze of that idea, or whatever? Because that could be family as well as seniors, right?
Correct.
Okay. I don't really see a problem.
I don't either.
Yeah. Might have, might have something, just a family too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Next, I have Jamie and Miss Stephanie from the Soulso Group. I just wanted them to come in and elaborate with the RFP. Because I know every time we meet, I tell y'all, we're about to go out, and then we get a pushback. So I don't want y'all to think like this is, I'm just holding it up. It's not, it's like, we have to make sure everything is done correctly. We don't want to mismanage or do something wrong, and then we lose funding or something is done wrong. So I know it's taking a while, but I'd rather do it the right way than the wrong way. So I'm not sure if Jamie or Stephanie wanted to.
I'll go first.
Okay.
That's okay.
All right.
Just wanted, good afternoon, Jamie McDaniel. So a couple of things, just a few things. To touch on RAG, I know we need to consider the potential for FEMA funds. If we're using FEMA funds to rebuild all 300 units, then if we're getting other money to help rebuild units, then that could be a duplication problem. So we need to look at grant funding. If we move forward with that, let's look at it, potential implications for the lack, or the FEMA funding decrease, if that makes sense. So I just wanted to make that point. This far is the couple of things about the environmentals for the two tracts of property we looked at, or three, right, really, the apartment complex. So, you know, you would think, how would an environmental study impact apartment buildings that are already there? When we talk about environmental, there's several aspects of that. There is the actual dirt, the ground. There is the socioeconomic part of it. There's the living conditions. And then, so there's multiple facts, multiple parts of the environmental. So even though the apartment building is there already, then there's potential that, you know, something might not. And for instance, when we went to look at those buildings, our construction manager did a moisture test on the wall, and it was, it, some ranged up to over 100%, in moisture. And so that could potentially be an issue. I talked to the gentleman that was showing, he said, just because it was August or whenever it was, he said, it was because of humidity in the air. It might be the case, but that might be something we have to look at. And then overall, to FEMA funds, you're going to look at, to help fund that, then there's going to be a higher level of scrutiny on that. And I imagine HUD too, you know, working down the road. With the other two parcel of property, because it's unturned dirt, undisturbed dirt, then they look at everything from artifacts in the ground. And so the one that the parcel of land is owned by SCPDC, the South Central Planning, they started, they did a Level 1 environmental on it, which is a big part of it. They did find some artifacts in the ground. I have reported that to FEMA to look at, which means, you know, at some point, there was either Native Americans or old settlers, or something that was there that potentially could trigger some sort of further studies. But that's a, that study probably lasted eight, nine months. So that part's already done there. As far as the other tract of land, you know, we discussed this a little bit earlier. It's not just plugging a address in and say, oh, there's no contamination, soil is good to go. There's a lot of different impacts that FEMA looks at, or federal government in general. So we want to make sure we cover all the bases there. You know, it's obviously not to me, I'm just doing the groundwork on letting you know that's what we're looking at. As far as the project update, so the insurance, the original amount was, I think we went to 21 units. And part of our investigation inside there, we did an elevation certificate study, surveying seemed out. And what we found was some of these buildings had to be elevated to 18 in the air. So it's pretty significant. Some were six and some were at four. So above what phase one elevation, so finished floor has to be at that level. And we weren't anticipating that. So what that would do, it costs a lot more to elevate a building than it does to build on, like what the units are now. And furthermore, we did a soil study. If you were out here at all, you saw a big auger, and they do, they drill into the ground, pull out samples, and see if the soil will be able to support elevated structures. And the end of it is, yes, they will. It's just, we had to go back to the drawing board to add extra foundation support. Because, you know, with all the, we had to do the same existing pads over there, and we had to look at the pads being able to support that weight. And then when they did the core sample, there's potential for the, without the proper support, you know, the buildings wouldn't be a viable option. So that's where we are. The costs are significant, significant more than what we anticipated. So the 21 units, that we got 21 buildings, that we originally thought, I don't know how many, we're waiting on getting costing back for that. So however, any of the ones that fall out of the insurance units will fall into the FEMA project. So it's not like you're losing those, it's just transferring from the insurance to the FEMA. And the good thing about that is we can use those numbers to bolster the, you know, give that to FEMA and say, this is the real cost of what is going to cost to build here, if that makes sense. We do have, we anticipate that FEMA, once we get the insurance, we know the dollar amount, how many units we're going to build, we'll add those other ones to the FEMA project. And then the first FEMA project is going through FEMA process. We're, I think we're weeks away from, said it before, we are weeks away from, I think, getting the results of that. And then after that, when that's 12 buildings, and after that, any of the remainder that, I think there's potentially 70-something buildings in that next project. And anything after that will be the ones that don't meet with the FEMA 50%, and we have to go to substantial damage through the, I think I've explained that. If you need me to elaborate further on that, I will. So you guys have any questions? We did have on the sheet, I think, did you?
Yes.
So you're seeing October 3rd date on there. We're not, we're not really sure what that date's going to be. Just we're waiting on the architect. Oh, and one more thing, the architect and engineer did meet with the parish. And it was Chris Pulaski, Kelly was there, several other officials, high-level officials were with the parish in Broadmore. So Mr. Bergeron is aware of what we're doing, the Phase 1, the plans, they saw the plans of the buildings. So that was a good thing. And they saw that we're moving on that, and I know that's a big concern for there. So that was communicated to them. You guys have any questions? I apologize if we're not further along. I, you know, I, I, we've been, we've been pushing, it's just.
Not your fault. Not your fault.
And before Stephanie step up, I want to let you guys know, there's a water leak that we have in Senator Circle. Our maintenance supervisor, Justin, did reach out to Mr. Lina King. I'll keep y'all updated on if we'll be fine. Yeah.
Okay, Miss Stephanie.
Stephanie, I'm sorry.
Hello, I'm Stephanie Triatt from the Soulso Group.
Bow you.
Hello. Sounds like I'm speaking a lot of that. So Jamie did elaborate on a couple of the projects that are going on. If no one has questions about that, that's what's on, what I handed out to you guys. I was kind of in board with the RFP. And like Jamie said, that's anticipating when we receive back the updated plans for the new foundation that has to be adjusted because of the soil samples. With that being said, I have gone into a little bit more detail about the process of this RFP specifically because of the amount of money and the amount of phases that will be taking place. So that's all that's set up here. I will say, I have received multiple requests to be put in on our list. I have 200 email lists right now that encompasses everyone's requests and other people that have reached out to the Soulso Group, other contractors that we've worked with in the past, and some recommendations from multiple AD firms, and a lot of organizations that are positioned to do rebuyses such as this. The reason why I wanted to go deeper into this RFP, excuse me. I don't know if you guys seen in the news, but recently, not just in Louisiana, or Terrible, or Harrahann, or Orleans Parish, across the country, RFP process using federal funds is under high scrutiny. And because of this high scrutiny, we have to make sure that every eye is on it and every team is across properly and done in a way that you're audit ready, that you're compliant, and that you're following your own procurement process, and that you're also following the federal government's procurement process. So I won't, I won't bore you with reading through this because you guys can all read, but if you have any questions after you read through all this, please let me know. I'm very happy to elaborate any further.
Thank you, Stephanie. Did you have something else?
I will take the mic.
Move on to number 10. Discussion of possible action relative to Resolution Number 1080-25 permitting the Houma Terrible Housing Authority's 2025 annual operating budget beginning October 1st, 2024 to reflect actual budget expenditures during FY 2025, ending September 30th, 2025.
So that's number 10. That's what they are making, so what we spent over the finish year, that's a part of number 10.
And we do need a motion.
Yes.
Okay, motion by Mr. Piku?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sherman, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion counts. Discussion of possible action relative to Resolution Number 1081-25 adopting the Houma Terrible Housing Authority fiscal year 2026 operating budget for FY beginning 10-1-2025 and ending 9-30-2026. I need a motion.
And that's the one that I explained to y'all, that she did it across all three of the amps.
Correct.
The adjustment because we're not, we won't get the same, the usual operating monies that we get for BIA Towers because it was approved for demolition. So she did it across the board for all three of the amps.
Right.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Sherman, second of them, Mr. Burke, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion counts. Discussion of possible action relative to Resolution Number 1082-25 approving the Houma Terrible Housing Authority submission of the Louisiana Legislative Auditor's Compliance Questionnaire and the engagement of Smith, Marion, and Company Franklin, Tennessee to conduct the fiscal year ending FYE September 30th, 2025, independent financial audit.
And once it's approved, they reached out already with the dates, if the board moved forward?
Are they the ones that have been doing our audit?
No, Conresnick, but then, I think they're going to be the third time doing our audit. Before that, we had Conresnick. But they gave the dates of January 5th and 6th, they'll be on site, 2026.
Okay. All right.
Need a motion?
Okay, motion by Mr. Piku, second by Mr. Burke, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion counts. Discussion of possible action relative to the schedule for 2026, Board of Commissioners meeting. Discussion of Possible Action Relative to the Schedule for 2026 Board of Commissioners Meeting Date. I need a motion. Motion by Mr. Piku, second by Mr. Burke, all in favor? Oppose? Motion caps. Commissioners, do y'all have any comments or questions?
No, I think everything is moving very smoothly. I thank y'all for coming today to give the reports, what y'all doing, and I know y'all really pushing the subject. Yes, we are frustrated, but guess what? We understand.
Yeah.
It's not y'all fault.
And I'll also say that, you know, with kind of the FEMA environment now, it is a little bit changed. I mean, there, there have been, if you had 1,000 people, there's 200 people now doing work with 1,000 people. So it's a little bit more difficult than what we had in the past. But with the new, I guess, options and what we have to do to meet state or to Terrible Parish and federal, it's, it's become a little bit more difficult than we anticipated. And no one anticipated it, because it went from the flood plan to change. I mean, the structures had to be changed, soil samples came back, they, you know, you have to do everything according to what's going to be in the city, which is public safety, and this is exactly what we're doing. And I will say, I do have a meeting with the BMG about the projects, and trying to, you know, push the CRC, which is, you know, who does the costing for projects, so I'm hoping to have some of the results out of that as well.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I would like to take a moment to wish Mr. Sherman a very happy birthday today.
Happy birthday to you. Thank all of you for being in the presence, in my presence at this time, to witness this great, great, I believe, a tribute to me. Thank you all for wearing my God bless name.
Enjoy the rest of your day, Mr. Sherman.
Thank you, sir, I'll do so.
Okay. Next regular board meeting is scheduled for November 20, 2025, 3:00 PM, 124K, Senator Circle, Homer, Louisiana. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sherman, second by Mr. Piku, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion caps.